Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Mark Conway, Chair, representing the 4th District. See. Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District, Councilman Glover, representing the 13th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District. I do not see Councilman Burnett on at the moment.
I just want Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District. Thank you, Councilman. I do not see any other council members at the moment. If you're on and I don't see you, please speak up. All right, and representing the Office of the President, do I have Nikki Thompson? Thank you, Nikki. Matt Stegman. And Erin Graffright. And representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mehu. And Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right, this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill LO-22-0024, Police Department Gun Trace Task Force, for the purpose of inviting Mr. Michael R. Bromwich and members of the Steptoe and Johnson LLP to provide the City Council with a briefing on their findings from the Gun Trace Task Force report. This bill is introduced on January 24, 2022, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilmember Conway. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Bromwich for agreeing to come before the committee and for his team's exhaustive work on preparing the report that we'll be diving into today. The Gun Trace Task Force scandal and the failures that it exposed were a wake-up call for the city and a shocking, even for many not surprising, reality for discussion around public safety in Baltimore. As officials and residents have noted ad nauseam in the past few years, there remain deep-seated issues that fuel mistrust between communities and police. This not only has implications for how officers are perceived generally, but it also affects the ability of the Police Department to respond to and to solve crimes. It's impossible to divorce the behavior that led to this scandal from the deeper cultural issues within the Baltimore Police Department that date back years and even decades. As the investigators note, while this has become known as the GTTF scandal in this report, the GTTF report, these issues are much more broad and complex than the task force, its supervisors, or even the state of the department at the time of the first indictments. What we have here is an incredibly impressive document. It's a product of an investigation that left no stone unturned. But as I think we can all agree, reports are only as important as the actions that follow. The investigators here issued 25 recommendations, which Police Commissioner Michael Harrison responded to and largely accepted the following day. And I want to take the time to dive into these findings and what steps the department has taken and will be implementing in response. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bromwich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't see my video. Is there anything I need to do to turn that on?
It looks like your bandwidth may not be great.
I generally don't have a problem with it. I'm prepared to do it without video unless there's a quick fix that anybody can think of.
Hold on one second. All right, I'm not sure that we'll be able to sort it out. It seems that it's either a bandwidth issue for you or maybe a RAM issue with your computer. To that end, I think we can proceed without a video, unfortunately. If it improves, you can turn your video then.
Yeah, I'm usually able to connect with videos, so I'm not sure what the problem is. But I agree with you. I think it makes more sense just to proceed. Mr. Chairman and other members of the committee, it's a pleasure to be here to share with you all the findings of our investigation into the Gun Trace Task Force and related events. The arrests of seven members of the task force on March 1, 2017, were the culmination of a lengthy FBI investigation that had begun more than a year earlier and was actually an offshoot from a county drug investigation that had been going on for some time. It happened to connect with one of the GTTF members, Mamadou Gondo, and from Gondo, it expanded to include the other members of the Gun Trace Task Force through electronic surveillance, which included a wiretap of Gondo's phone and ultimately a bug that was placed in his police vehicle. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the response from the community, the arrests, were shock, horror, but unfortunately not great surprise among many people. But the charges were stunning because they included racketeering, racketeering conspiracy, robbery, overtime fraud, and framing it as a racketeering case, I think, was jarring to people because racketeering laws are generally used for mobsters, organized criminals, rather than police officers. And the legal categories themselves really, in some ways, understated the egregious nature of the crimes that these officers had committed. They included the theft of drugs and money, home invasions without warrants, and false affidavits and police reports, among other things. Now, within a few months, four of the members of the GTTF pled guilty to racketeering and agreed to cooperate with the government in their prosecution and ongoing investigation. And the debriefings of those four members, Gondo, Hendricks, Rayem, and Ward, provided a wealth of information that was not only relevant to proving the crimes that had been alleged against the other GTTF members, but also disclosing the crimes that they individually and in groups had committed going back as much as a decade. And in addition, it opened a window onto an expanded roster of additional corrupt BPD officers. So among the next events that were relevant are the January 2018 trial of the only two members of the GTTF who had been charged that had not pled guilty, Daniel Hersell and Marcus Taylor. They were convicted. Let me tell you a little bit about the origins of our investigation very quickly. The District Court Judge, Judge Budar, who oversees the consent decree, had been pushing the city and the Police Department for a couple of years to conduct this kind of exhaustive investigation because his view was that the consent decree would not succeed and the community would not provide the trust that's necessary unless they felt they had a true and full accounting of this awful scandal. I know that Commissioner Harrison, when he came in in early 2019, and new Deputy Commissioner Nada, when he came in over the summer of 2019, strongly advocated for an independent investigation to be conducted by people outside the Police Department. And in October of 2019, we were retained to do that job. Now, I was specifically promised complete independence and non-interference by the city and the Police Department. Those are the only conditions under which I would have agreed to do this investigation. We got those guarantees, and the city and the Police Department were true to them for the duration of our investigation. So they fully lived up to their representations. So in defining the scope of the investigation, it became clear to us pretty quickly that there were really two main questions to answer. First, what motivated these officers to engage in the sordid acts of corruption that they engaged in? And second, as a systemic matter, what weaknesses within the Police Department allowed them to do it and to do it for such a long period of time? We quickly realized that the Gun Trace Task Force itself was created in 2007, so 10 years before the arrests. But it became clear to us that we needed to go back even a little further than that to understand the ideas behind creating the task force. And so we settled on going back to 1999, when mayoral candidate Martin O'Malley ran on a very strong and aggressive anti-crime platform and advocated the bringing of the New York City Police Department's zero-tolerance and quality-of-life approach to Baltimore. So we thought it was important to understand the scandal in that context, that is, a context of various law enforcement initiatives that went back a long time. So in answering the first question, the obvious way to go was to try to interview each of the defendants, each of the corrupt officers, to find out what motivated them individually to turn away from their oaths as law enforcement officers and do the opposite of what police officers are sworn to do, and that is victimize people that they are sworn to protect. Unfortunately, we didn't get that cooperation. We wrote letters, actually two sets of letters, one in January of 2020 and one in July of 2020, asking for their cooperation and asking them to live up to their claims that they were really sorry. All of them said they were very sorry to the sentencing judge at the time that they were sentenced. They apologized to the city. They apologized to the Police Department. They apologized to their families. But when we called on them to do something that really could have helped the Police Department and the city, that is, to cooperate with our investigation so that we could understand why they did what they did, they turned us down flat, with one exception, and that exception was someone who was not a member of the GTTF, but someone who that federal investigation had led to, a man named Victor Rivera. And Mr. Rivera did cooperate with us fully, gave us the benefit of multiple interviews, and actually provided a training video to the Police Department to bring home the individual and human consequences of what happens when a Police Department descends into corruption. So without the cooperation of the defendants, we had to figure out an alternative way to figure out who they are and why they did what they did. And so thanks to BPD giving us full access to the internal records of the department, including their Internal Affairs files, the records of their plea and sentencing hearings in front of the federal court judges, and the interviews of their work colleagues, we were able to assemble biographies of these individuals, and that's what's contained in the individual bios that are in Chapter 10 of our report. Now, in terms of answering the second question, what were the weaknesses in the Police Department that allowed this corruption to take place? As I said, we really felt we needed to take a broad historical look at BPD going back 20 years because we learned that corruption in the Police Department has unfortunately a long history, which has included thefts, excessive use of force. But we didn't know, and we still don't know, the precise extent of that corruption. Unfortunately, that's going to remain an unknown. So to understand the history of the Police Department over the last 20 years, it's important to place it in the context of the extraordinarily high levels of homicides and serious crimes in Baltimore, which sadly, as you know, Mr. Chairman, have continued to this day. And Mayor O'Malley was attracted by the strategy and tactics that had been employed in New York City. And what he did was to bring in two successive commissioners, Ed Norris and Kevin Clark, who were schooled in the New York City Police Department and had worked with the quality-of-life, zero-tolerance approach. Now, that New York model, as it was imported into Baltimore, was layered, unfortunately, on top of an institutional culture in BPD that permitted, if it didn't encourage, widespread lying on official documents and the use of excessive force in dealing with its residents. Comstat, which was the tool which was debuted in New York and brought not only to Baltimore but to many other cities, was imported as the central accountability tool that was going to be used in the Police Department. But unfortunately, over time, the command staff, that is, the upper-level executives in the Police Department, seemed to interpret that as a simple directive to be more productive, as measured in various numerical metrics. Now, neither O'Malley nor Norris were blind to the existence of corruption in the Police Department. In fact, one of the themes of O'Malley's first campaign was the need to police the police. He brought in a group of New York consultants who did a broad survey of the department and who learned from that survey that a huge percentage of BPD officers believed that a quarter or more of their colleagues, that is, 25% or more of their colleagues, were engaged in thefts of drugs or money from drug dealers. That is, about a quarter of the members of BPD believed that a quarter or more of their colleagues were engaged in that. Now, if the question had been expanded to include lying on police official documents, I have no doubt that the result would have been higher. So that was the starting point, that there was a belief within the department itself that there was already a high level of corruption. And what existed at that time, unfortunately, and which continued for many years, was a poor relationship between the Police Department and the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, which really got in the way of using the criminal law, the criminal sanction, as a meaningful deterrent against corruption. Norris was the commissioner under O'Malley for three years, from 2000 through 2002, and he was replaced by Kevin Clark. Clark brought from New York something called the "buy-and-bus" strategy, which focused on arresting large numbers of low-level drug dealers without really a focus on the larger organizations of which they were a part. Now, that strategy was strongly opposed by certain elements within the Police Department because they believed, rightly, I think, that that strategy had a lack of impact and that it had an adverse effect on community relations because of the large number of arrests and the relatively minor drug crimes for which people were being arrested. Now, Clark created a new division called the Organized Crime Division, which was a forerunner of something called the Violent Crimes Impact Division, which is better known in Baltimore. And the problem with creating that division, which swelled in numbers, was that it was staffed in part by inexperienced police officers who were inadequately trained. And so what you had was a growth of plainclothes units, which by their nature are more loosely supervised, at the expense of patrol, which was deprived of its previous levels of manpower. Now, Clark himself was fired in late 2004, the result of a domestic incident that came to light and Mayor O'Malley's losing trust in him. And the problem with his firing, not that it wasn't deserved, is it pointed out and underscored the lack of stability at the top of the Police Department because there now had been four commissioners in five years. Before O'Malley, the commissioner was Tom Frazier. O'Malley's first choice for commissioner was a man named Ron Daniel, who within 57 days was fired by O'Malley. Then you had Ed Norris, and then you had Kevin Clark. So you really entered an era of instability, starting in 1999 and 2000. Now, there was a very significant shift in strategy in early 2007. And just to set the background events that I know you're familiar with, Mayor O'Malley was elected governor in November of 2006, and the mayor's position was taken by Sheila Dixon, who didn't believe in the zero-tolerance, quality-of-life strategy. And what she did after working with Leonard Hamm, who had replaced Clark, once Clark was fired, and who had really been a caretaker as head of BPD, she selected a Baltimore Police Department veteran, Fred Beelfeld, who had been the deputy commissioner, first as the acting commissioner and then as the commissioner. And there was a marked strategy shift at that time, from zero tolerance to targeting the most violent offenders. There was a focus on guns and violent criminals, and much less on quality-of-life offenses, and much less on minor drug targets. And that really was the context for the creation of the Gun Trace Task Force, which was created in early 2007. Now, the purpose of the unit was very specific. It was to gather intelligence for gun trafficking investigations. It was to work with gun dealers and pawn shops, to work on cases of straw purchasers. And it was to work with other state and federal agencies to make cases against people involved in gun trafficking. And the approach was multi-agency. Beelfeld himself got the cooperation and the participation of the Maryland State Police and the Baltimore County Police Department. Now, the goal of the Gun Trace Task Force was to be an analytic and investigative unit, not a street enforcement unit. And in fact, Beelfeld gave that pledge to at least several of the members of the original members of the GTTF because they didn't want to be a part of it, if it was what's called a "jump-out squad" or just another street enforcement unit. And so he gave that pledge. Unfortunately, there were problems almost from the very beginning. There was a slow start because of various logistical issues. There were leadership and supervision issues on the BPD side. The first supervisor of the GTTF was suspended because of a domestic incident of his own. And so the unit was rudderless for some period of time, until the summer of 2009, when Kevin Jones, Kevin A. Jones, who had an operations and enforcement background, was brought in to head the GTTF. And it was really with his becoming the supervisor that, according to the witnesses we interviewed, the GTTF began morphing into a street enforcement squad. There was some confusion. There were mixed signals from leadership. And there was unfortunately very little interest from the highest levels of the Police Department in what the GTTF was doing. Commissioner Beelfeld obviously was running the entire department, and he wasn't in a position to closely supervise the unit that he had created. And the people below him, frankly, weren't that interested in it, didn't believe in the mission. And so the unit continued to be somewhat rudderless. Jones recruited some members for the GTTF that turned out not well. He recruited Mamadou Gondo and Jamel Rayem, who he had supervised in one of the BPD districts. And of course, they were among the seven, eight defendants who were ultimately prosecuted and convicted. Starting at the end of 2009 and then stretching for the next couple of years, the partners in the Gun Trace Task Force departed. That is, the agencies that Beelfeld had invited in fell away for various reasons. Now, the Maryland State Police left at the end of 2009, and we interviewed several of the members. And they claimed that it was not because they were upset at what the GTTF was doing, not upset with the unit become more of a street enforcement unit. But essentially, they had a better offer from the federal ATF, and they took that better offer and left the GTTF. The story with Baltimore County was very different. Really, from 2009 on, there was a long simmering dissatisfaction on the part of the Baltimore County participants in what the BPD GTTF members were doing. They felt that the terms of the agreement were being violated. There was an agreement that the search warrants that were going to take place in Baltimore County, on Baltimore County's turf, would be shared with Baltimore County officers before they were executed. That was not done. The agreement required BPD to notify Baltimore County officers when there was about to be a search warrant that was executed. That was not lived up to on a number of occasions. And it was a result of deteriorating relations between the BPD members and Baltimore County members of the GTTF. Baltimore County withdrew in March of 2011. We have a detailed account in our report of the circumstances of a particular incident that prompted Baltimore County to withdraw. They had previously shared their concerns about the direction in which the GTTF was going. They didn't feel that there was any kind of constructive response from BPD, and so they decided to head in a different direction. But really, by that time, March of 2011, the GTTF had become just another street enforcement unit. There was nothing distinctive about it, and it had departed very far from its origins as an analytic and investigative unit. So fast forward to 2012, Fred Beelfeld, who's been there five years, resigns. He was the original sponsor of the GTTF. And so the GTTF becomes an even greater orphan or stepchild, whoever we want to describe it, than it was before. The city brings in another outsider, Anthony Bass, who realizes from soundings in City Hall and throughout the community that the Violent Crime Impact Division, its name has changed to the Violent Crime Impact Section, was creating problems. And a lot of complaints that Baltimore residents were making were against VCIS visas officers for various kinds of illegal or improper behavior. So Bass shrunk visas, and he called it something else. And that seems to be a common feature of the Police Department over time, is putting old wine in new bottles. And so he changed visas, which had been vised, and before that, the Organized Crime Division. He changed it to the Special Enforcement Section. But he didn't know enough about the personnel to make sure that the people that he cut from the Special Enforcement Section were the most problematic officers, the ones who had gotten in trouble and were likely to get in trouble more in the future. Now, over time, and really beginning back in 1999 and before, there was a perpetual intermittent struggle on behalf of various commissioners and other command staff members to reform the Internal Affairs function in the Police Department. There were multiple efforts to do that, but it was never successful. And the main problems were manifold. The quality of personnel in Internal Affairs, the number of personnel in Internal Affairs, which was inadequate for the task, the lack of investigative training, operational security and leaks whereby internal investigations would be shared with people outside Internal Affairs who had no business knowing about it. Internal Affairs had a terrible reputation among the rank and file of the Police Department. Nobody wanted to go there because of its reputation. Part of it is just the nature of Internal Affairs. Nobody loves Internal Affairs in any Police Department. But this Internal Affairs Department had an even worse reputation in the department than most. And then there was a very flawed trial board system. So in those cases in which investigations were done well and charges against the officers were sustained in Internal Affairs, it went before a trial board, and the trial boards would frequently acquit the BPD member, even in the face of very substantial evidence that should have resulted in administrative punishment. One of the things that Bass did was to bring in, from outside the department, someone to head up Internal Affairs, a man named Jerry Rodriguez from the Los Angeles Police Department. But when we talked to Mr. Rodriguez, he said that although he was given a broad mandate to reform Internal Affairs, he was not given sufficient support by Bass. He was extraordinarily frustrated by that, and that's the reason he left in early 2013. Now, what we found was that, over time, there was really the ascendancy of cowboy culture in the Police Department, and with that, failures in the chain of command. So for example, Wayne Jenkins, the lead defendant in the case, was known throughout the department for his exceedingly reckless driving. He was getting in traffic accidents all the time, not only endangering himself, but endangering his colleagues, and more importantly, endangering people in the community. And yet, there was never a serious sanction against Jenkins for his extremely reckless driving. Then there was another case, a very prominent case, that was mishandled in the department. A case involved an individual named Demetrius Simon, who Jenkins chased in his vehicle and essentially ran down in his police vehicle because he suspected that Simon was engaged in illegal drug activity. It thankfully didn't hurt Mr. Simon all that much. But Jenkins discovered that Simon didn't have any drugs on him, he didn't have any guns on him. And so what did he do? He realized he was in a little bit of a pickle. So he called one of his fellow officers, Keith Gladstone, and essentially asked Gladstone to bring a gun that could be planted at the scene to frame Simon and to give him a justification for doing what he did. Now, I don't know if there's ever a justification for ramming somebody with your vehicle, even if they did have a gun. But here, there was not a gun that Mr. Simon had. It was planted by Jenkins and his colleagues, and that transaction is actually what led to the indictment of three other officers, including Gladstone, a couple of years after the GTTF arrests. But what happened, in addition to Jenkins sort of getting away with things, was he was able to subvert the chain of command. He was deferred to because he was so productive, because he was seizing large quantities of drugs, but particularly large numbers of guns over time. We learned about numerous thefts by the defendants who were prosecuted and corruption. We learned about numerous thefts by the defendants who were prosecuted and corruption prior to 2015. But the fact was, they took it to a new level after the death of Freddie Gray and the uprising that followed his death. Jenkins, in fact, was praised by upper-level command staff members. He was pointed to as a role model because of his continued aggressiveness in pursuing his police responsibilities. And his immediate supervisors, we learned from our interviews, found him absolutely impossible to manage. He did have ties with higher-level people in the department, Sean Miller and Deputy Commissioner Dean Palmer. And he bragged about that constantly. And would tell his supervisors, when they asked him, well, wait a minute, why did you work yesterday? You were supposed to be off. And he would say, well, so-and-so called me and asked me to come in. Or Deputy Commissioner so-and-so called me to come in. And he had that kind of sway with upper-level people in the department. And he may have exaggerated it, but he had enough of a relationship with higher-level people that his lieutenants really didn't dare challenge it. So now we move to June of 2016. And there is a transition in the GTTF's leadership. So Kevin Jones had been promoted. Thomas Allers, who was subsequently prosecuted, took over the GTTF in 2013. He left in the summer, in the middle of 2016. He had heard through the grapevine that there was a federal investigation of the GTTF. He was scared, understandably. And so he went to his patron within the department, Deputy Commissioner Palmer, and asked to be transferred to a task force unit, a DEA task force. And that transfer was done. Now, interestingly, that task force had not had a representative from the Baltimore Police Department for a couple of years. So clearly, it was not an important need that needed to be filled. But Allers asked to be moved out of the GTTF, and he was. So a combination of Dean Palmer and Sean Miller decided that Wayne Jenkins was the guy to run the GTTF and to take it over from Allers. But Jenkins did an extraordinary thing. He insisted on bringing the crew that he'd been supervising in another enforcement squad with him to the GTTF. And although people noted that it was awfully bold at the time, he wielded so much power in the department that that request was acceded to. And he was able to bring Hendricks and Ward and Taylor, all GTTF defendants who were prosecuted and convicted, to a GTTF that already included Daniel Hersel, Mamadou Gondo and Jamel Ram. And so there was, after some initial tension, a seamless joining of two very corrupt police department plainclothes squads, now headed by Wayne Jenkins, and now being the Gun Trace Task Force. I won't go into any details about the crimes they committed. Those are laid out in court documents and at length in our report. So what I think I'd like to do, because I know, I don't want to take too much more time, is share a little bit with you about our findings after we had done all this investigative work. And the first major finding was that there was inadequate supervision in the GTTF and in the police department generally. There was a lack of rigorous supervision, particularly in plainclothes unit, a lack of leadership training, insufficient management and scrutiny of particularly productive officers and squads, and of course, the corrupt frontline supervisors themselves. Second finding was that there was historically an excessive reliance on numerical metrics in judging and evaluating police officers. Comstat had been transformed from an accountability tool to a more crude form of scorekeeping. The fortunes of supervisors within the department, whether they were promoted or not, were determined by the numbers. And the way things worked was that the more productive a squad was, the less supervision there was. There was an emphasis on arrests and seizures, and not whether they were good arrests and seizures, either whether they were lawful or whether they led to convictions. And what that did was it led to a coddling and promoting and protecting productive members of the department like Jenkins. Our third finding was there was really a global failure of the accountability system within the police department. There was no expectation or reality of swift and consistent justice within the department, which undermined everyone's confidence, undermined the confidence of people in the department and undermined the confidence of civilians who saw that even legitimate complaints that they made went nowhere. And there were no consequences for the officers. There was, over time also, as I mentioned before, insufficient talent, resources and leadership in Internal Affairs. And there was wide-scale cynicism about the Internal Affairs function throughout the police department. And we point out in the report, specific failures of the accountability system with respect to Jenkins, Hersel, Ram and Robert Hanker, who is still awaiting trial. Based on our review of the Internal Affairs files, all four of those officers should not have been officers anymore. They had committed egregious enough offenses that they should have been terminated by the department well before they completed most of their crimes. So that's our report, Mr. Chairman and other members of the committee. We also made, as you noted at the outset, a series of recommendations. And I don't know whether you want me to go through those or whether those are clear enough and you may just want to ask some questions about it. It's really up to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. That was really, really helpful. I think we should go through the recommendations.
Okay.
BPD will speak about their approach thus far based on the recommendations, but I think it should start there.
Okay, very good. So I'll just do that in summary form. For each of the now 26 recommendations, we added one after the report was published, which we can talk about in a minute. We have a, we laid out what the factual basis was for those recommendations. But what I will do is simply summarize the recommendations without talking about the factual basis, so we can walk through those relatively quickly. So the first is that the police department needs to follow its established processes for background investigations. It can't take shortcuts at any point, even as now, where there is an urgent need for officers. And it's very difficult, not only for the Baltimore Police Department, but police departments around the country, to recruit enough and enough qualified members for the department. Those are the times historically when corners are cut, where standards are lowered, and that simply can't be done. If that is done, you have a much greater risk of having corrupt officers in your ranks. Second, and BPD, and we disagree on this, this one. We believe that responsibility for conducting background investigations should be transferred inside the police department. I know it's a resource problem for the department. I know it's a personnel problem within the department. I'm just troubled by the fact that you have contract employees who get paid by the background investigation that are doing the background investigations of officers. And I know that BPD has had a good experience so far with its current contractor. But I don't think the contractor has skin in the game, frankly, when they're being paid per background investigation. I think somebody who is either in the department or who was in the department, so an alum who retires in good standing and wants to continue to contribute to the department after he or she retires, that's a perfect position for someone like that. They care about the department, it seems to me, more than any contractor ever would. So I respect BPD's position and their satisfaction with their contractor. I just think that the people of the Baltimore community would feel a lot better if these background investigations were being done by people who have skin in the game. The third recommendation, and the last one under hiring, is the need to enhance integrity testing components for officers who are being recruited. Both the psychological piece of the examination and the polygraph piece of the background investigation, I think, need to be enhanced in order to increase the likelihood that recruits who are inclined to engage in misconduct are more successfully screened out. So those are the recommendations for hiring. Let me move now to the recommendations we had under training. The police department and the police academy in particular needs to demonstrate a zero tolerance for cheating at the academy. We heard all sorts of stories, historical stories, none of them current, going back 20 years, 15 years, 10 years, that in the interests of getting every recruit that came into the academy through the academy and graduated from the academy, that all sorts of stuff was done, including sharing answers to tests with the entire class, taking people who were not performing well on exams, giving them, quote, "private tutoring sessions," unquote. And then they would come back and pass the test. People who failed various other parts of the curriculum, who would be taken aside and retested out of the view of other recruits, and all of a sudden, they would pass. Most of the people who we talked to came in with classes that were anywhere from 35 to 50 recruits, more frequently on the high end. And many of them said that 100% of their entering class graduated. We asked them, well, were there any people in your class that you thought, just based on observations of them, both in the academy and outside the academy, that were not suited to be police officers? Either by temperament, impulse control, anger management issues, judgment? And almost everyone said, yes, yes. I remember one or two or three members who should not have graduated. And many of them, in the interviews, added, and they didn't last long in the department. They were booted out fairly quickly, many of them for misconduct. And so I don't have any reason to believe that that kind of cheating culture still exists in the police department. But I think it's important that the academy establishes that there is zero tolerance for cheating. Second, because of some of our findings through the interviews, we recommended that there be an anonymous reporting mechanism at the academy for recruits to report conduct that they found disturbing, that were exemplified by other recruits. And we made it clear that this should not be a gossip mill. This should not be a way of sharing information on fellow recruits that you don't like. This has to be very significant information that really is relevant to someone's suitability to perform as a police officer. And that, along with all the other training recommendations, was agreed to by the police department, and they will implement that. One of the things that has been lacking historically in academy instruction is any honest, hard-edged look at corruption scandals that have occurred in the Baltimore Police Department. The consequences to the individuals and the department and its relationship with the community, and the lessons learned from those scandals. It's almost as though, and this is not atypical in organizations, they want to run away from the scandal, they want to leave it behind, rather than taking a close, hard, unvarnished look at it and learning from it. Not burying that part of their history, but in fact, learning from it. And together with that, we recommended that, to drive that point home, they should bring in individuals who were corrupt officers, as well as individuals who were victimized by corrupt officers. And we've given them the first training video by doing that with Victor Rivera. And I know that's already been incorporated into the curriculum. I think recruits, this can be all very abstract to them. It needs to be made very concrete. Here's what happened to somebody who was in your department and who went down the wrong path and whose life was left in shambles, not to mention the people who he harmed through his corrupt activities. And by the same token, the department needs to look for victims, people whose lives were impaired, if not ruined, by corrupt acts that police department members committed on them that may have resulted in losing their job, losing their families, or whatever. Again, that needs to be concrete. Next, we emphasize the need for truthfulness in all written submissions that officers make. We learned that one of the first things that officers do that leads them down the road to corruption is lying in official police documents, whether they are applications for warrants or police reports or arrest reports. There are multiple reasons for why the true facts are not presented. But in many cases, corruption of some of these officers began with falsifying applications for search warrants, falsifying police reports. And most of these officers believed, this guy's guilty. But I don't have enough to get him arrested, much less to convict him, so I'll exaggerate things. I'll claim I saw things I didn't see. Or I'll claim I saw things myself, when in fact, it was somebody else, an informant, that saw them. And so that kind of lying has become endemic in the police department. And it needs to be laid down very early in training. This is unacceptable. Much better that somebody goes free because we don't have enough evidence, that you exaggerate the evidence or fabricate the evidence in order to justify an arrest. And then the final training recommendation we made, we had the opportunity to sit in on the Epic Training Program that Commissioner Harrison has implemented. Ethical policing is courageous. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether you or other members of the committee have had the opportunity to sit in on that. But it's a very impressive training curriculum that teaches officers to intervene with their colleagues, and not just with their peers, but with their superior officers if they see their superior officers engaging in misconduct or about to engage in misconduct. And we had the benefit of interviewing two sets of instructors, instructors who were recruited within the police department to facilitate the training in the Epic program. And we were extremely impressed with their commitment, their belief in the training program, and their belief that they had made a difference in training everyone in the department. And that began, I believe, that training of that began in, I think, late 2020 and was completed in April or May of last year. But we believe strongly that that needs to be built on and expanded on, and that the principles that underlie Epic need to be incorporated in all parts of the BPD training curriculum, both for recruits and for in-service training. Let me turn now to supervision. We think that, as I mentioned before, when I was talking about our findings, that there were real gaps and weaknesses in supervision over the GTTF and more broadly, over plainclothes units. So our first recommendation is to assign a mentor to each new officer in the department. And to have, and for that mentor to continue in that relationship with the officer for five years. Because one of the things we learned was that officers sometimes are a little starstruck. They feel alone. They don't know who to join forces with. And some of them, Mr. Rivera made this point very eloquently, he wanted to be accepted by his peers. He wanted to be one of the cool guys. And that's why he started engaging in thefts with a more senior officer. We think by pairing recruits with a senior officer who has been vetted for that person's integrity, and this will be someone who that officer can go to and say, look, I'm facing this challenge. Can you give me some advice? And maybe not just professional advice, maybe life advice. Maybe, you know, being a police officer is creating tension at home or tension in the officer's neighborhood. Somebody who's been in the department a long time and has gone through a lot is in a position to provide that kind of guidance, without the sense of officer not wanting to share that with his sergeant or with his peers. It's somebody outside his chain of command who's not going to give him or her operational instructions, but can be a guide, can be somebody who can provide a wide range of advice that can help the officer through difficult periods. Second recommendation under supervision was the need for detailed briefings for incoming supervisors of units, and if possible, shadowing by new supervisors of old supervisors. We found that when people came in to supervise particularly plainclothes units, and most specifically, the GTTF, they didn't know what the GTTF did. There was no briefing of them by their predecessors in the job. They didn't know anything about what the unit was supposed to do. They didn't know anything about who the people in the unit were, who was performing at a high level, who was not performing at a high level. And that's just a basic matter of communication. And I know that sometimes comes down to a matter of resources. But I don't think there's any excuse for not putting supervisors in a position to succeed by giving them the information they need about the mission of the unit and about the personnel that they're inheriting. Third recommendation under supervision is the importance of observing the chain of command. Of course, the police department is a paramilitary organization, and the chain of command is critical. And what people like Jenkins and other people in the squad were able to do, because they were productive, was to go outside the chain of command and to go up, all the way up to the deputy commissioner level and a level or so below that, and really subvert the supervisors and really deprive them of the power that they should That they should have to know about what their subordinates are doing and to supervise them adequately. And so it's very important that the, uh, chain of command gets observed without exception. Doesn't matter if you're the most productive police officer in the department, you shouldn't have a direct line of communication. To a deputy commissioner or a colonel or lieutenant colonel. Next, we think it's very important to have intensive screening of members who operate in plainclothes. And we're well aware that the number of plainclothes officers currently has been dramatically reduced. And we think that that's a good thing, but inevitably there's a pendulum that swings. And there will be at some point more plainclothes officers again over time. Um, it's just important that anybody who is recruited into a plainclothes units. Go through a careful vetting process that includes polygraph exams, that it includes intense vetting of their IA history. And where members who are coming into the unit agree to, um, unannounced financial audits of their finances to make sure that they are not. Stealing, um, and padding their bank accounts. And so we think that process needs to be, um, intensified, the screening process. The, the final recommendation under supervision is, we think there needs to be a notification. Uh, of pending serious IA investigations to the supervisors of the officer who's under investigation. And let me give you a very specific example. Jamel Ram was under investigation and was actually suspended. For close to a year and a half for his involvement in a theft of eleven thousand dollars. And on charges of lying to internal affairs about whether he knew the other people who were involved in that incident. There's no question that he was factually guilty, but because of a technical error by internal affairs. Um, he was acquitted by the trial board. He went back to the GTTF without his supervisor being told. That the person who was being returned had been proven to be a liar. And what happened was that that, that officer, Jamel Ram. Was free to involve in cases in which he was making arrests, um, and testifying in court. When the department knew that he couldn't be trusted and that he was not a credible witness. Uh, and so that's, it runs against the grain a little bit of internal affairs to share its information. But we think that to keep the department out of even greater trouble. Um, information about serious allegations of misconduct, particularly those that go to the credibility. Of an officer need to be shared with the supervisors so that that officer is not put in position where they have to testify in court. Um, finally, there, w- we made a number of recommendations in the oversight and accountability area. Um, we, we said that it's really important that recruitment efforts to bring good, solid. Officers who are respected within the department into internal affairs. That's been a critical need for a long time and it continues to be a critical need. Uh, second, that there needs to be more accurate tracking of complaints, more details in the system. Uh, so that it's easy to, to, to go into and figure out what happened. Uh, third, there needs to be close oversight of top performing units to ensure that things are done in the right way. Uh, we talked to a number of, of people who said it is at least impor- as important. To give close scrutiny to your high performing units as it is to giving scrutiny to your low performing units. Because you need to ensure that the reason they're not performing at a high level is because they're violating the law. Um, but instead that they're instead doing good police work. Um, next, really as a department wide matter, the focus always needs to be on quality cases rather than quantity cases. Uh, the numbers shouldn't make as much of a difference as they have, uh, historically over the last twenty years. It's the quality of the cases and whether those cases lead to convictions. Which has actually never been part of a performance evaluation in BPD. It's arrests and other metrics that have been, uh, have been the basis for evaluations, not successful cases, uh, that went to conviction. Uh, the department needs to rebuild its capacity to perform integrity stings, which right now is a resource issue. It isn't able to do, but it is a way to ferret out corruption that's used successfully by other police departments. And should be reinstu- instituted in BPD when resources permit. Next recommendation is there really needs to be targeted training to sharpen. Interviewing and writing skills for personnel in internal affairs. Uh, the quality of some of the reports we reviewed were just not very good. Uh, that was true also for the conclusions drawn by the Justice Department in its pattern or practice investigation. And reproduced in its two thousand sixteen report. So, um, the interview, basic interviewing and writing skills need to be stressed. For all internal affairs, uh, investigators. There also needs to be periodic training for members of the trial board. The trial, trial board members. In many cases, don't seem to understand what their mandate is, which is to be satisfied that. Proof by a preponderance of the evidence has been shown, not proof beyond a reasonable doubt. We sat in on one internal affairs cases in which, uh, a couple of members of our team sat in for a two day hearing. And they thought that the proof was overwhelming, may have even reached beyond a reasonable doubt. Uh, the, the trial board acquitted. And found that there was not even a preponderance of the evidence, fifty one percent. Showing that the officers were guilty. The offi- the members of the trial board later claimed that they were confused by the standard, that they were more familiar with beyond the reasonable doubt standard. They didn't understand fifty one percent. Truthfully, I'm somewhat skeptical of that, uh, because if you've served on a trial board, you're told multiple times what the standard is. And I think it may be in some cases a way to evade convicting a fellow officer. But in any event, there ought not to be an excuse, they don't know what the standards are and that periodic training should be given, uh, to trial board members. And then, um, finally, trial board members ought to be vetted very carefully for conflicts of interest. They shouldn't have close relationships with the accused, they shouldn't have close relationships with the witnesses, they shouldn't have close relationships frankly with the lawyers. Um, and so that's really important to, to make sure that the trial board process is one that's characterized by integrity. And then we have of just a small number of. Uh, additional recommendations that just in the miscellaneous category. Number one, we think there needs to be a, a systematic and comprehensive program of detailed exit interviews of departing employees. The department right now loses so much institutional knowledge. By having ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty year veterans of the police department leave. Without anybody mining them for what they've learned, what has worked, what hasn't worked. What changes they would make in the police department if they were commissioner and so on and so forth. Some of those may be worthless, but you don't know that until you try. And I think that what's happened is that over the decades, that has not been viewed as a resource that, uh, that can be mined. It really should be, it's a lost opportunity. Number two, um, incoming Baltimore Police Department commissioners. Should debrief their predecessors and it's really the same principle. Frequently BPD has brought in outsiders as their commissioners. There are lots of people, but particularly former commissioners who have been in the job. And they know what the obstacles are. And they know things about the department, um, that a newcomer can't know. And so we think it's really important that incoming commissioners, uh, debrief their predecessors. To find out things that they might be able to learn from them. And to employ those insights as they take over the head of the police department. Next recommendation is we think it's really important to minimize city hall interference with the police department. There should be absolutely no, zero involvement in investigative matters or personnel matters. We heard lots of accounts of members of the police department who established relationships with people in the mayor's office. People on the city council, um, and who would lobby for promotions with people in city hall. Uh, would sometimes share investigative matters, either that related to themselves or related to others with people in city hall. Uh, the commissioner can't run his or her department with that kind of intervention and that kind of interference. And, um, I think that's an important principle for everyone who serves in government, whether on the city council or. In the mayor's office to, to take to heart. And then finally, our last recommendation was, um. We were, um, hired in October of two thousand nineteen. Uh, to look at a scandal that broke into public view in March of two thousand seventeen. That was a two and a half year delay. Uh, that was avoidable. Um, and what should have happened is very quickly, um, once the arrests and indictments were announced on March first. The police department, together with the city governments should, should have said to themselves and should have said to the public. This is obviously something that can't be handled internally. We need to get an outside investigator to look at this. And, um. I think it, it was not done in part out of a concern that it would interfere with the criminal investigation. But in fact, we learned from talking to the US Attorney's Office and the FBI. That nobody in city government or in the police department ever checked with them to find out whether a separate but parallel investigation. Would have compromised the, the criminal investigation. There are lots of ways in which it would not have. I would say of the hundred and forty plus people we interviewed during our investigation. We could have interviewed a hundred and thirty of them, uh, without interfering with the criminal investigation. And so those people would have been available to us or some other independent investigator. And a tremendous amount of work could have been done and we would have been able to deliver this report. Um, yeah, a year or a year and a half earlier, uh, than we did. So I think that, that that needs to be done, um, the next time it happens and it will happen. Uh, again, hopefully not of this dimensions, hopefully not involving this many officers. Uh, but corruption is a fact of life and, um, you can't entirely avoid it. And so the next best thing is to get to the bottom of it as quickly as possible. So before I close, I just, I do want to mention, I mean, this has sort of been an unrelievedly negative. Report because what we studied was not, um, uplifting. It was sad and it was tragic and it was unfortunate. But the police department is doing some things that I think are important. Uh, and that, uh, should make people feel better about the direction which the police department is heading. First, I'm a believer in the consent decree process. I've been an independent monitor of police departments and the process works. Um, I was the independent monitor of the DC Police Department, the Metropolitan Police Department. For six years from two thousand two to two thousand eight, it was a much better department. Everyone thinks particularly people in the community thought. Once the consent, well, once the, the, uh, the settlement process and the monitorship was ended. It's slow, it can be frustrating. I know it's been somewhat slow and frustrating for the people of Baltimore and for the judge who's presiding over the consent decree. But the process works and I would suggest that people be patient with it. Second, um, the widespread, the universal use of body worn cameras by BPD officers, I think is a vital anti-corruption tool. It was not really originally viewed that way, but it is. Uh, and I think that, that, that not only the existence of body worn cameras. And very specific guidance to officers as to the situations in which they must turn them on. As well as a robust auditing, uh, capability, both within the police department and within the state's attorney's office. I think will serve as a significant deterrent to corruption. And officers who quote, forget unquote, to turn their cameras on once, okay, maybe it's an innocent mistake twice, probably not. Three times, they're hiding something. And so, uh, there is a way to know where, if police officers are hiding what they're doing, hiding their misconduct, hiding their corruption. Uh, by not turning on their cameras. Fourth, I think the reform of the law enforcement officer's bill of rights is a move in the right direction. It has truly constrained the ability of the police department and other police departments. Uh, to, to enforce accountability within its ranks. And so I think the changes made are positive. It's obviously a, a, something that's very much in process that's going to be implemented over time. But I think it's certainly a, a step in the right direction. And then last, um, uh, is my encouragement at the epic training program. Uh, and related efforts with it really show, um, by this administration so far, a, a commitment to. Um, ethical policing in a way that I had not seen, uh, through other administrations. And so I think they need to be encouraged to continue with that kind of training to broaden it out. And to more generally broaden out, uh, the ethics and, and accountability training. Um, including focusing on specific incidents like the GBD incident. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman and, and other members of the committee. I think when, when the court urged this investigation on the city and when the city authorized it, everybody knew it wouldn't be a positive and uplifting report. It wasn't, uh, it's not, um, but progress in the future requires honesty, brutal honesty about the past. And particularly given, uh, the incredibly difficult crime fight that Baltimore. Continues to be engaged in proper supervision, accountability. And integrity are vital and they were casualties, um, in the investigation that we did. They fell by the wayside in the interests of an aggressive crime fight. And so I hope, I hope, um, that the honest reckoning that we've tried to provide. The city and you, uh, about the past should boost some confidence that nobody's hiding anything anymore. About the gun trace task force. And I hope that's a step, um, in the process of rebuilding trust. That's so vital in the relationship between the police department, um, and the community. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bromwich, that was, um. Really, really, really well done, I think incredibly helpful and I think, um. The, y- you spoke about honesty about these issues. Um, I want to commend the police department, uh, for moving forward with this, this investigation. Uh, and cooperating as best as possible, not getting in the way and allowing you to, to do your job and to do it well. Um, clearly this is very thorough. Um, and I think a lot to digest and I think we'll be hopefully using these insights for years to come. To make sure that we're continuing to improve as a department. Um, I'm going to open the floor to, to questions from the committee. Um, uh, I'll allow a, a round of questions before we move to BPD and then we'll allow another round, round of questions. Um, I'm going to start off with a question of my own. Um, I, I'm curious, Mr. Bromwich, if, if you and your team got into this, uh, but prior to the O'Malley administration, there was an internal policy. That required police officers remain in the district level uniform patrol for three years before they were eligible for specialized units. Do you think at all that the elimination of that policy had any, uh, impact on the road behavior? And the likelihood of young inexperienced cops working in place, plainclothes, uh, units?
We didn't specifically look at that, Mr. Chairman, but I think it makes a lot of sense. What we did learn about was that people who, in the judgment of their peers, were too inexperienced. And had too little time on the department and were too inadequately trained, um, to be in place, plainclothes units. Sometimes I think after only a year in patrol or a year and a half in patrol. They were transferred to plainclothes units. Um, and I think that was a mistake. Uh, I think officers don't have the experience and the maturity, um, to handle themselves in the context of plainclothes. Policing, a plainclothes enforcement. So I don't know whether three years is the magic number, uh, but clearly more than a year and a year and a half. I think is necessary before you, you send someone into the very different world. Of non-patrol policing, that is playing, playing close policing in many instances. So it's a very good question and, and I think it does point to one of the flaws that we did see, which is inexperienced officers. Uh, having too much responsibility.
And I think, um, sort of right, right along the lines of that question, um, during, during the Norris administration. There was a requirement to participate in the sergeant's testing process, it changed from five years to three years. Uh, do you think that also kind of played into it? It, you probably have the same answer, but I'm curious if.
I do, I think it's the same answer. I think that you want, um, you want a level of maturity in your sergeants, first of all, so that they earn the respect. Uh, people that they're supervising and I think it's hard for somebody who's three years in, um, to command that respect. And, uh, and, and I think there's also coupled with that, there's the absolute need for leadership training. Um, and so not only should, should you have an officer have more than three years of experience before they're eligible to be promoted to sergeant. Uh, but there ought to be, uh, you know, very high level leadership training so people understand. Uh, how to play a leadership role, which doesn't come naturally to a lot of people.
Um, and, and my, my next question is, um, along the lines of, um, data and metrics and comstat. Uh, it's something that I harp on frequently. Uh, and I, I know how important it is to the, the department's ability to keep track of what it's doing and how it's doing it. What are some of the insights that you had on, um? Comstat, uh, around how we should be looking at it going forward as a tool that. Makes that apartment better and not just productive and counting widgets and, and sort of pushing things forward, but, but. Hopefully getting the right outcomes when all said and done and, and doing so ethically along the lines of all the other recommendations that you had. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I think the, the, you know, the, the, the traditional comstat that originated in New York under Chief Bratton. Uh, was really a cops on dots view, uh, of accountability. Um, and what commanders would be expected to do is know not only the broad sweep, but the very specific details of crime that was going on. but the very specific details of crime that was going on in their precincts. And they should know what's going on in their precincts. Over time, I think the NYPD comstat devolved into kind of a shaming ritual and a kind of a public humiliation ritual. I saw one, I think, in 1996 or 1997 when I was in the federal government. And I understood the discipline that it imposed, but it seemed unnecessary in its brutality, frankly. Now, I know that the version that was brought to Baltimore was sort of not that cruel, not that harsh. But it still was felt to be an exercise at times in embarrassment, personal humiliation, and so forth. And the more disturbing part about it is that many of the witnesses we interviewed said that they spent Monday to Wednesday preparing for comstat on Thursday so they wouldn't be embarrassed, they wouldn't be shown up to not have a complete command about all the data in their districts. And that Friday was the day that they could go back to policing. So Monday, Wednesday, preparing for comstat, Thursday, comstat, Friday, doing their jobs. And I'm sure that was exaggerated to some extent, but I think that does suggest too much of an emphasis on the style in which comstat was conducted. I know, although I haven't sat in on, I've talked to a number of people in the current administration. I've spoken to Commissioner Harrison, I've spoken to former Deputy Commissioner Murphy, I've spoken to Deputy Commissioner Sullivan. And it seems that the version of comstat that's now being employed in BPD is very different from the one that used to be employed. It's not just a cops-on-dots approach. It expects its commanders to know a whole range of things that go beyond crime statistics and specific crimes. They're still supposed to have a handle on what's going on in their district and expected to have a strategy to deal with it and then to report back on whether the strategy is successful. But it's not sort of pure numbers and pure individual cases. One of the criticisms we heard about the former version of comstat is that you had a large number of people in a room talking about the details of specific cases. And I think it was Deputy Commissioner Murphy who said, "That's not a maximum use of people's time, is to have them listen in on cases that they have nothing to do with. Let's talk about issues that are of broader applicability and broader interest to the department, in addition to talking about, you know, some specifics about crime." And that makes, that's common sense. That makes a lot of sense to me, that you would focus on for the whole broad sweep of issues that commanders are responsible for. And I think what's happened, it's my sense, that commanders now do have a sense that they are responsible for a much broader range of issues than used to be the case. There's certain functions that used to be headquarters functions, like fleet management and overtime and so on, are now viewed to be the responsibility of commanders, as they should be. And so I think there's been a positive move in comstat that I commend.
Thank you, Mr. Bromwich. I'm going to open the floor to questions. Any questions from the committee? Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos, and then Councilwoman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bromwich, for the really extensive report and summary. I'm interested that you started with the rise of the zero tolerance era in BPD as kind of the starting place. Could you share a little bit about how the culture around zero tolerance policing and low-level drug arrests ultimately contributed to a toxic culture that ends up with the GTTF scandal? And I asked that question in the context, and you made a note of this at the end of your remarks, that, you know, we're going through a very significant wave of violence in the city of Baltimore right now. And many of us are hearing from our constituencies, "Well, we should go back to whatever was working back when such-and-such was mayor, such-and-such was police commissioner." And the, you know, the assumption there that is that we should go back to zero tolerance, and we should be arresting a whole lot more people. And so I want to just, on the record, kind of hear from you about why, one, not effective long-term, but also how that practice ultimately leads down the road where we find ourselves with a very, very, very corrupt unit within our police department.
Yeah, I think that it was a process of discovery in Baltimore. I think many police officers and executives were originally enthusiastic about zero tolerance and quality-of-life offenses because crime was at a very high level then as it was now. And it was most interesting during our interviews to talk to veterans of the police department who, over time, realized that there were too many arrests being made, that there were lives being ruined, that it had become, in their eyes, a numbers game rather than one of effective and efficient law enforcement. You know, that coupled with the fact that a premium was being placed on arrests rather than convictions. And so you really weren't, what you were doing is giving people criminal records without enforcing consequences in terms of convictions or, you know, prisoner jail time when it was warranted. And so they came to the conclusion that that just didn't work, that playing what they viewed as a numbers game, arresting large numbers of low-level drug dealers, was not the answer. And so that really was the motivation to move away from it in 2007 and to focus much more on violent crime and guns. Because, you know, those are the weapons of choice in using violence on residents of Baltimore. And so I was convinced by many of those officers, as well as, you know, some academics who we talked to, who were close observers of the scene in Baltimore, that a more focused strategy on violent crime and guns is really the core of the answer rather than arresting people for a variety of relatively minor and peripheral offenses. There was one observation that we put in the report that really brought this point home. As you know, the closure rate for homicides has been at sort of deplorably low levels for a long period of time. And one of the people we interviewed, who had been in homicide for a long period of time, related the story about going to someone who he believed had information about a homicide. Person's reaction was, you know, "Why should I help you? You arrested me for drinking in public. I have no interest in helping you." And so I think that's sort of, in miniature, some of the attitude that people in Baltimore came to have because of the large number of arrests. And I want to be clear, I don't think that Martin O'Malley or Ed Norris or Kevin Clark did what they did out of bad motives. I think they were truly serious about wanting to serve the people of Baltimore and wanting to reduce the amount of crime. I just think the strategy that they employed, in retrospect, is not one that was going to be successful over the long term. And I think a strategy focusing on violence and focusing on guns is far more promising.
Thank you for that. My second question, so we've sort of shifted away from the war on drugs, now recognizing that addiction is a public health crisis, that it is a mental health disorder. But I think there's still sort of an ambivalent relationship with how we go after guns. I will say for myself, and I think many of my colleagues, I am incredibly disturbed at the ready accessibility of guns within our city. Like, when I used to teach, teenagers would tell me it's easier to get a gun than a pack of cigarettes. And that's terrifying in a city where we have just a lot of conflict that escalates very, very, very quickly. A lot of your recommendations are about better supervision, are about, you know, making sure that we have the right folks in the force and that we're getting rid of the wrong folks. But I am curious about the explicit focus on guns and having a gun unit, in this case, the Gun Trace Task Force. Does that inevitably lead us into trouble if, like, the pursuit is about chasing around guns? Or do you feel like that is an appropriate strategy, if done with all the different checks and balances that you think need to be in place?
It's a great question. I think it is an appropriate strategy so long as the system surrounding it is designed to make sure that things don't get out of whack. So just to go back to the GTTF, what happened was it was the, an idea of Fred Beelfeld and Cheryl Goldstein in the Office of Criminal Justice and the mayor's office. It made a lot of sense at the time. I think it still makes a lot of sense. The problem was that there was not a belief that extended much beyond Beelfeld and Goldstein about following through and making sure that the Gun Trace Task Force, in fact, did what its name suggested, which was to trace guns. And, you know, the strategy was, okay, there are lots of guns coming into Baltimore. Where are they coming from? Let's take the guns that are used in offenses and trace them back and find out how they're getting here and use what we learned from that investigation to make cases against gun trafficking rings and, you know, gun stores that sell to straw purchasers, who are obviously straw purchasers and so forth. The problem was because the wrong people were put in charge as supervisors in the unit and the wrong people were recruited after the first generation signed up. They were not well-equipped to do the kinds of investigations that they were set up to do. There was one original member of the unit who was very much with the analytic and investigative strategy. And she, she built case folders that should have been followed up by members of the unit. But members of the unit were not interested in following up on it because it's not, it's not as exciting. You don't get the adrenaline flowing when you're visiting gun shops and asking to look at ammo logs, right? And so you have to be very careful in who you recruit. Not only people who have clean IA records, but people who are capable of doing the analytic investigative work that's required if you're going to be tracing guns. And although a small number of people who were originally recruited to the Gun Trace Task Force and who were given the pledges by Commissioner Beelfeld that, no, that was not going to be a street enforcement unit, they soon were outnumbered by people who had no interest in doing analysis, no interest in doing analytic investigations. And so there was a sort of a corruption of the purpose of the Gun Trace Task Force through a variety of factors. Now, I know that Mayor Scott has set up a new firearms unit. I think it is much more carefully circumscribed and defined than the Gun Trace Task Force proved to be. And I think because of the lessons of the Gun Trace Task Force, it will be kept, it should be kept, at a modest size. It should be closely supervised. People should be carefully vetted before they go into the unit. And not just so they're clean, but so that they're capable of doing the work that a gun tracing unit should be doing. I mean, the Gun Trace Task Force, I mean, the name almost became a joke because they weren't doing that. And yet, because they were productive in 2016, and we point this out in our report, they were cloning the name. There was a Gun Trace Task Force II, there was a Gun Trace Task Force III. None of them were doing tracing of guns. It, you know, the Gun Trace Task Force became synonymous with a productive unit, having nothing to do with tracing guns. And so I think as long as you're able to keep your eye on the ball, you're able to have the kind of supervision that you need. And you recruit the right people, including the right supervisors, it has a good chance of succeeding. And it's not something that should be abandoned just because of Baltimore's experience with this Gun Trace Task Force.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. I believe Councilman Burnett was next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this really helpful presentation. The question I had was around the, regarding hiring metrics. You noted that in the beginning of your presentation that there were issues with hiring and whatnot, potential corruption specific, to a sense of urgency, to fill the ranks. Was your recommendation regarding hiring metrics and the potential of corruption, did that also include police officer trainees? Or did that extend to civilian police cadets as well?
We really focused on sort of recruiting people to be officers rather than civilian employees, if I'm understanding your question. But my understanding is that the Cadet program, which I'm not as familiar with, has a similar process for vetting applicants as the BPD recruit program does. And so long as that's the case, and so long as there is as thorough a background investigation, which includes a polygraph, includes psychological exams, includes the whole panoply of vetting and requirements, I think that makes sense.
Okay, and I guess to add on to that, do you believe that, you know, in addition to that process, having a program that would have, you know, a multi-year apprenticeship program, would, do you think that that would also help better vet potential police officer trainees coming into the force?
I think it probably would. I mean, the longer you have to look at someone and assess them on a day-to-day basis, the better position you're in to make the judgment as to whether they're going to be able to function as police officers and take on all the responsibilities that police officers have.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I have more, but I'll wait for it the next round, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bromwich. This is a really informative report. I have two questions. One is, you're very clear, the training aspect is extremely important. And I just have to say, as an aside, Major Loeffler in the Northeast, I was so upset when he was taken to then head up the training unit, but now I understand why, because he is just awesome. And he gets it. And what his gift was, was explaining, not only to officers but to the public, why it was important that we couldn't just sweep people off the corner, why it was important to be able to get evidence, to be able to address. Like, he, you know, so what I'm wondering is, part of what I think is missing in all of this is how officers can talk to the public about what it is we're trying to do that's new. Because like my colleague, Councilman Cohen, said, "Folks are expecting what happened before or would like to see what happened before. And there's obvious reasons why we can't do that before." So I was curious, I didn't see in your analysis at all around the interactions and explanations and communications with the public around this work and around the reforms.
You're right. You didn't see that in our report. And I really didn't view that as part of our mandate. But I'm happy to answer your questions about it. First of all, I think the leadership of the training academy, education and training, is one of the most critical roles in the police department. And I think Major Bartonis, when he was there, did a terrific job. And I've heard great things about Derek Loeffler as well. And so if I were a police commissioner, I would want to put my most, one of my most talented people in that role, even though it does take them off the street. I totally agree with you that there needs to be as much communication as possible between people in the police department and people in the community, explaining why the strategy that's currently being pursued is being pursued and why going back to some of the strategies and techniques that were used previously not only are inadvisable, but some of them were illegal as found by the Justice Department's investigation. So I think there is always an important communication and education function that needs to be played. I'm obviously not privy to all of the work in that area that this police department is doing. But there's always more that can be done, and there's always more that should be done, particularly in, in an era when crime is so high and so many people are justifiably upset about it and scared of it.
Yeah, thank you. I think, just to add to that, I mean, there are, there are expectations. And I think sometimes officers, at some point in time, have wanted to satisfy And I think sometimes officers a, at some point in time have wanted to satisfy those expectations as have people in offices like where I am. So it is, uh, it's just extremely important that we're all on the same page on how we have those communications. So I appreciate that you appreciate it, but, and I know that uh the Commissioner will be working with us on that, um, I hope. And then my second question goes back to the metrics. Um, so uh, you know, obviously measuring for success is extremely important. Um, and I don't know, it, it wasn't really in the report, but you know, we, and, and in this committee, we look at um lots of statistics, um, you know, uh, murder rate, homicides, carjackings, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All of us in our districts get the Citizen App and we get the notifications and all of that. The public is also driven by numbers. So what are the metrics? What are the things we really should be looking at that all of us can also be um aware of? So that um, you know, we're all singing from the same song because again, the expectations and, and we're in crisis right now. So the, the, um, as you said, that it's sort of easy to, to try to just address something right away that's going to show lower numbers. But if we're not doing that in a productive way with a good process, then it doesn't help, right? So I'm wondering just if you have some, you'd said that CompStat is doing better, that, and that's fine. But if there's some specific things that we should really be focusing on instead or, or in addition to, that would help us with that complete picture?
So it's a great question. I think the metric that is the most important is the throughput from arrests to convictions. Are the arrests leading to successful prosecutions? My understanding is, is that has never been focused on. Um, the evaluations of police officers were based on, among other things, arrests. And to my knowledge, no Commissioner, no administration in the Police Department has ever looked carefully at the percentage of arrests converted into successful prosecutions. Now, there may be multiple reasons why a prosecution is not successful at the end of the day. Uh, but I think as a sort of a rough mark of whether uh police resources are being used effectively and if they're producing results that you want to see, that relationship between arrests and convictions, I think, is vital. And obviously, you know, it goes beyond what's within your jurisdiction uh because it's, you know, the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office. But I think a much greater effort needs to be put into figuring that out for the department as a whole, uh, for different parts of the department, for different districts, if there is a variation among districts. And that ought to be used as a way to um really refine some of the work that's being done by the Police Department to try to increase that ratio a, as much as possible. I don't, you know, if I had to guess based on the information we gathered during our investigation, I would say, you know, 10% or fewer, maybe 15% or fewer of arrests during the 20-year period we looked at were converted into convictions. That's an abysmally low number. And, and I think, but the only way you'll know what the number is, is try to collect the data and analyze the data. And to my knowledge, maybe it has been done, but to my knowledge, it has not been done. It's certainly never been the basis for evaluating the performance of individual officers or squads.
So, Mr. Bromwich, actually, um, I literally used to make that report. Um, I, and, and I can, I, I, I don't think it's being made anymore.
Now, what, during what period was it being made?
Uh, so I was the police analyst in City Stat and I, I, I ran Gun Stat from I'd lose track of time, but I was there from 2012 to 2017. Uh, and up until the point, the moment that I left, um, we were doing that report. We were tracking uh at least for gun, gun-associated cases. Uh, we were tracking the arrest, we were tracking um the process through the courts. So we were keeping track of what was null-pressed, what actually went through, what, who were convicted and otherwise.
Was that, was it, was it, was that done, to your knowledge, before 2012 as well?
It was. I think it was done, uh, it was done by the, the police analyst before me as well. Um, and so I, I think it, it took a while to build up. Because at first, at first the metrics were pretty crude. Um, but it got much better over time. I, I think this is one of the things that the committee has been trying to dig into um, as we've had discussions with OPI, the Officer Performance Innovation, um, and understanding what they're doing by way of Police Stat and the previous Gun Stat that, that we used to hold. But, you know, it, it's music to my ears because I think that's exactly some of the uh, the things that we used to, used to look at, and I think were hopefully pretty helpful. But I, I, I don't know that BPD looks at that internally.
Oh, yeah, okay. And that's the key. I, I, I did not know that, that you had focused on it or that an office had focused on it. That's great. And so it ought to be fairly easy, if it's not being done now, to sort of recreate um, and get it back to where it was when you left in, in 2017. But, but, but I think it's vital that the Police Department has that data and uses it as a basis for evaluating uh its personnel. It's obviously important for city leaders to know it. I think in some ways it's even more important for um the executive team and the Commissioner to know it.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Ramos, any, anything else, any clarifying questions on that?
Those were my um two questions and I'm happy to see that we're getting to be on the same page here. Thank you.
And uh, I'll make a note for us to follow up with OPI on exactly that point, Councilwoman, because I think uh, and, and Michael is an excellent suggestion. All right, a, any other questions um from folks on the committee? I see Councilman Glover, and then we can circle back. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. uh Bromwich for providing us with this information. Uh, earlier on, you know, you guys talked about uh in the GTTF uh report that uh we were supposed to like join efforts with like the surrounding uh Jewish dictions. Uh, why do you think that that partnership kind of dropped off? Is it because of the, the uh, what we assumed back then to be effective policing that was going on? Where the Gun Task Force with these illegal uh activities that were going on? Are you think, are you, would you say that the surrounding Jewish dictions uh kind of backed off because of the illegal activities that, that were going on with Baltimore City Police Department?
I don't think the, I'm really focusing on Baltimore County. And so Baltimore County, we interviewed probably a half dozen of their people. And it wasn't so much that they knew that corrupt activities were going on. What they were concerned about is violation of the agreement uh that they had struck with Baltimore City, that they would be able to review the search warrants that were going to be executed at residences in Baltimore County, and that they would be able to actually participate in the execution of those search warrants. Uh, they, in a way, they had kind of a proprietary interest. They said, this is our county, these are our residents and citizens whose houses you're going into. We want to make sure that there is, even though it's been signed off on by a Baltimore City judge, we want to feel comfortable that there's enough supporting evidence for you to conduct the search. And more importantly, we want to be there so we can know what the search was, was, uh, was involved in and, and how it was conducted. If there are allegations uh that the residents subsequently make um about how the search was conducted, they'll probably turn to us, the Baltimore County Police, because we're the police over this county. And if we're going to be held responsible for it, we want to be knowledgeable about what happened. And so for that purpose, it's really important that we be there. And so it was the constant sort of violation of those terms. That is, being able to see the search warrant applications and being able to be present when the search was executed, that's what caused them to say, okay, enough, uh, we're out. Uh, we're not interested in working as part of this uh task force anymore. Um, and they, they, they thought that, that the members of the Gun Trace Task Force who were doing work in Baltimore County were cowboys. Um, you know, they would do things like when they conducted search warrants, they would leave, they would, they would rifle through drawers that had clothes in them and leave the clothes just in a pile in the middle of the room. And that may sound like something trivial, but it's not. I mean, because you are, you know, you're, you're, you're in somebody's house. And so you have a responsibility, and this was felt by the Baltimore County officers, to put things back as near as possible to the way you found them. And they just found that the attitude of the Baltimore City Police Officers on the Gun Trace Task Force was, I couldn't care less about these people, all I'm looking for is evidence and it's, they are mess to clean up, not mine. So it was that kind of attitude that really turned them off and ultimately turned them away from participating in the task force.
Thank you. I'm, I just want to, I don't know if, if I'm, if I'm clearly on the same page with this, but I'm going off of, you know, I'm one of, I'm probably few that are on the City Council today that was born and raised right here in East Baltimore, like my entire life. And, and me myself, I think about uh those early uh, back in the early twenties, where, you know, at one point in time, uh, don't like the Martin O'Malley administration because a lot of this, you know, is, is not that you point the fingers, but I could, I could only go off of what I see and what I've experienced. Uh, I do see today that we are, uh, with this new uh Police Commissioner and this new administration, we're trying to bridge the gap on what was set and what was wrong for so many years that we know that can't be fixed overnight. But I think about the times when, you know, a young man growing up, the white T-shirts and the, the blue jeans were a style for us. And, and many of us would walk to the corner stores to hear, here come the jump out boys. And when we would hear those conversations, you would also hear your friends in the alley say, hey, 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 man, they're trying to put a gun on me. So you, you think about those things from the past. Um, I'm excited that we have gotten to a point now that that investigation has taken place and we have gotten those bad uh officers out of the Baltimore City Police Department because that's not who we are. But uh, again, with your expect, uh, your expertise and your knowledge, do you think that many of these issues that we face today in uh 2022 is because of, I consider to be failed policies of past administrations? Is the reason why we say what we're saying today?
You know, I think it's complicated. I think it's really, really complicated. And it's hard to untangle all of the causes that led to the really unfortunate situation that you guys are dealing with in Baltimore every day with, you know, shootings and homicides and so forth. You know, I, as I said at the time our report was released, there's really no heroes um, you know, among the administrations, either the mayoral administrations or the police commissioner administrations in this story. There is, i- if there were, you know, successes that, that continued over time, this wouldn't have happened, uh, would be much less likely to have happened. And we'd be talking about something else. It's, you know, the reason our report is so long and that we go into so many different issues is because it is complicated. And there are a lot of causes for what went wrong, both um that you can point at the individuals who engaged in the corruption, but also a Police Department that was insufficiently vigilant about weeding out um its bad actors. Uh, and I think some of that is attributable to uh some of the failed policies of the past. Some of it is attributable to people probably who should never have become police officers. And part of it is attributable to things that happened to them while they were police officers that caused them to violate their oath. So it's complicated, but I don't think, I mean, the reason why we put, try to put this in historical context is because I think that some of the policies of the past sort of explain how we got to this point. Um, and, and so I, I don't think you can say they had no role in it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other questions before I circle back to uh Councilwoman Burnett? All right, Councilwoman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, and, and maybe this is, will be covered later. I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, if BPD is going to do their own uh presentation, but
He will, yes.
Okay, so I, well, this, from Mr. Bromwich, um, I guess broadly speaking, is, is there where, you, you pointed out at least one area of uh disagreements in your recommendation or disagreement uh between your recommendations and uh what uh the Police Department uh is willing to adopt. Are there other areas in which you, you see that there is an indifference in opinion on how to um remedy these issues moving forward?
No, I don't think so. Uh, I was very pleasantly surprised that uh, that with the, with that one exception and with a couple of other reservations about, you know, we, we agree with this and we are currently resource-constrained. Uh, but if we get additional resources, we'll be able to do that. None of those reservations or caveats struck me as um, has insincere. Um, I think that they, they truly do agree with the reasoning behind the recommendations and there are real-world resource constraints that prevent them from implementing uh parts of recommendations uh right now. So I don't think there are any significant uh differences of opinion with, with that one uh exception. And I think that, that uh, that the department is truly committed to, to making these changes. Now, I think this council and others have a responsibility to make sure that that happens, right? Um, oversight is important, your oversight is important. Um, and so uh, it's not enough for us to make recommendations. It's not enough for the Police Department to say they will implement them. Um, they need to show that they're implementing them, um, you know, in some form, in some way, over time. And that's the responsibility of this, this committee and the City Council as a whole um, and, and others. Um, but so far, I've been very pleased and gratified that uh, that they have looked at our work and realized that uh the recommendations flow out of the work um, and, and that makes sense. We, we deliberately set out not to overload uh the Police Department. And you know, sometimes investigations of this kind lead to 600 recommendations. Where 600 recommendations are ridiculous, right? Because no organization can effectively implement such a huge number of recommendations. Actually, one of the faults that we found with a review that was done under Commissioner Bass was it resulted in, as a strategic plan, it resulted in just a huge number of changes uh that needed to be made, you know, 46 in this category, 162, I'm making these numbers up in another category. And, and I, I'm sure that the Police Department made a sincere effort to try to implement them, but it's unmanageable. Uh, and so what we sought to do is to focus on the clearest issues on which we thought changes needed to be made or trends needed to be continued. And we made it, we made a concerted effort to limit those to a reasonable number. And that's how we ended up with the 25 plus one, so the 26. So I think that both is manageable for the Police Department to implement and manageable for oversight bodies to look at down on the road um, with, with, without an undue amount of effort.
Thank you. Um, and you, you sort of touched on my follow-up question, so I'm glad we're sort of thinking about this the same way. Um, in your experience, not only in just reviewing um these findings and, and, and producing a report related to the Baltimore City Police Department, um, what do you think effective oversight should look like uh among uh, you know, City Hall? I guess speaking broadly, because you spoke earlier about the role of City Hall and, you know, going a bit too far uh in the past in, in involvement of the operations. But I guess what are some of the best practices in, in your experience and the types of things that uh should be looked at to prevent this type of thing uh from uh occurring again in the future?
Yeah, I do think it's important that, that City Hall's role, City Hall broadly defined as the Mayor's Office and, and City Council and so forth. Uh, the Mayor's Office is responsible for setting policy and ultimately for selecting Police Commissioner with the advice and consent of the council and dismissing police commissioners. And so I think that role and setting broad strategy in conjunction with the Police Commissioner and the Police Department makes sense. Um, and then the Police Department needs to have operational independence um to execute that plan and to carry out uh its strategy. And ultimately, the Police Commissioner is accountable to you, to the mayor, to the residents of Baltimore. And, you know, judgments need to be made over time with patience um as to whether those strategies are succeeding. But, you know, we heard multiple stories, most of which we did not include in the report, of individual, you know, either mayors or city councilmen um establishing private relationships with people in the Police Department, urging the promotion uh of certain people in the Police Department, urging the demotion of certain people in the Police Department. That's just not appropriate. Uh, and it undermines uh the Police Commissioner, who needs to be perceived by the people in the department as running the Police Department, not the mayor running the Police Department. Um, and, and that's a really important concern going forward, that the police, the Police Commissioner be viewed as running his department. Now, if he fails, he or she fails, you know, the mayor has a remedy. And the mayors of this city have exercised that remedy on multiple occasions. But in terms of interference with investigations or um interference with investigations or um involvement in personnel decisions, in my view, that's totally inappropriate. I mean, the, the, the police department that I in some ways am most familiar with is Washington DC where um I was the mon- independent monitor for six years. And I know that the mayor of the city, at that time a man named Anthony Williams, uh selected Charles Ramsey, who came out of Chicago Police Department. Um and he selected him as the police chief, and he let him loose to run the department with what I gather was virtually no interference from the mayor's office or City Hall. So that's sort of the model in my mind of what should happen. Uh the mayor, with the advice and consent of the council, should pick someone they think is qualified to be the police commissioner, consult with the police commissioner on strategy, and then check on its implementation. And if issues arise that, you know, your subcommittee or the full council can call hearings and explore those issues, but the police department needs to have the autonomy and the independence uh to run its own shop operationally.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that there, Ryan, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And um I actually have uh one question, sort of piggybacking on, on my initial questions. And this is with regard to promotional incentives. So um during the Norris administration, um the position of captain was transitioned from a civil service protected rank to to an at-will unprotected uh unprotected um position. Talking too fast. Um so do, do you think that that has any bearing on executive level management positions? Breakdown in accountability and um ability to, to do as they see best despite policy decisions from above?
So I don't know the full history of that. I mean, we, there were a couple of instances in which we sort of touched on it peripherally. But I do know that a number of very qualified lieutenants who we spoke with have not been interested in being promoted to captain because they've become at-will employees and because they can't earn overtime, among other things. And it seems to me that that works to the detriment of the department. Uh if people are resisting promotion to higher ranks, even though they are deemed qualified, um in some cases extremely qualified. And because of sort of the quirks of civil service or designations or categorizations and who's eligible for overtime and who's not, they don't take that position. Uh I think that's to the detriment of the police department. So we haven't looked at it deeply enough to sort of know what the optimal solution is. But in any organization, if you have a group of qualified people who don't want to be promoted, that's a bad sign.
Yeah, and I asked that question fully realizing there's a balance um for the commissioner and his ability to choose his command staff and um, you know, hire and fire as he sees fit. Uh but yeah, that, that sort of dawned on me as, as we were talking through some of these questions, but um that is my last question. And any other questions before we move on to BPD? All right, with that, I'm gonna hand off to the Baltimore Police Department.
Mr. Chair, can you make it so that I can share my screen, please?
Sure. Uh Sam will give you guys permission in a second.
Are you seeing, are you seeing the presentation out?
Yep, we can see it.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Uh I can hear you, Commissioner Harrison. I
Now, I'm gonna start. Thank you so much, uh Mr. Chairman and members of the of the council for the opportunity to provide an agency response to this report. We're anxious to provide our views on what's already been done and then how to proceed forward. Uh but first, I wanted to say that I personally thank Mr. Bronwich in our federal public hearing recently where he did this presentation uh and we provided responses. I thank him for his thoroughness and his completeness of this comprehensive uh very exhaustive report that was much needed, much supportive. Um thank him and his entire team for this body of work. Um, we've been working on these issues since I first arrived and since I first put a leadership team together here in Baltimore City, because we immediately recognized that the misconduct and the criminal acts from the members described in the GTTF report were only possible because of large-scale systemic problems within the agency. It was not just isolated acts of misconduct, but whole-scale organizational culture that led to this horrible stain. And that's why we are all here to fix these issues. That's why we have a consent decree, which provides the path forward on reform. And we reviewed the recommendations from Mr. Bronwich, and you're gonna hear this from members of my team. We learned that we were not only in agreement with all of the recommendations, but we either already implemented or are currently on the path to implementing most of them. Even the one where we talked about, you heard about uh a philosophical disagreement. It was really only the resource constraint that wouldn't allow us to do it now more than disagreeing on it in concept. Now, culture change in the agency is necessary to prevent corruption. And we are now ensuring that the department is being managed with the right systems of accountability and not creating perverse incentives that lead to another GTTF. And so I just wanted to say hello to you and to tell you that we supported this, asked for it. We agree with all the recommendations, have already implemented, if not most, on the pathway to implementing all of them. Um and we're showing you constantly, every time we come before this council, a very different police department. And I'm excited about the recommendations, but I'm excited about the future of the Baltimore Police Department. This time, I'm gonna turn it over to my chief of staff, Eric Maloson, who's gonna take us there.
Folks, hear me now? Okay, apologies. I had a slight microphone issue there. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh with us today, we also have members of the executive team, Deputy Commissioner uh Michael Sullivan from our Compliance Bureau, who heads up our, our training academy and compliance efforts. Deputy Commissioner Brian Nato from our Public Integrity Bureau. Um and just, you know, to be able to provide, if there's further questions at the round of questions from the council about some of these recommendations, uh we're here as, as able to provide that answer. So uh with that, Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. Um when we looked at these recommendations, they were brought into, you know, major categories. The first major category was, was around hiring. Um and this is something for which, again, we wanted to make sure our standards for hiring are absolutely unimpeachable and, and something for which are, are the the North Star for, for how we bring folks into the department. We do not want to lax those standards for any reason. Um, you know, the establishment of the kind of, of, of just pushing numbers through, pushing numbers through led to what we saw in the quality of some members for whom Mr. Bronwich identified in his report. We wholeheartedly agree that those standards are necessary, and we want to make sure that when we move forward, um, you know, we're constantly looking at that standard and it not changing because it's so important. Um, you know, we want to make sure we're enhancing all of the measures for integrity checks and, and for uh ensuring that our polygraph process is appropriate. Uh again, these are regulations that only enhance what we're doing, and we're gonna be adopting these if not, uh again, if it's, if it's not a resource constraint. We, we talked about you know, and, and we appreciate Mr. Bronwich's a, a view on, on, on our vendor that helps us with field investigations, Kent Tech. Um but that's something that even, you know, as, as moving on a project like that, we did that in consultation with our monitoring team. We, we want to make sure it's done the right way. We do it in parallel with with other um, you know, internal resources to make sure that we're getting the right outcomes. And so, you know, if we can get more staffing, if we can internalize more resources, if there are alternatives that we can approach that, that build our capacity in an effective way, you know, we want to do that in a responsible fashion. So um, we'll move to the next slide. I want to just go through these. And then for training, you know, all of the recommendations on training, these are, most of which we're already moving forward on. Uh, for instance, you know, zero tolerance for cheating. Uh, the information I have is that we terminated three people last year for cheating in the academy. We, we do not tolerate it, and it's demonstrated by our ability to separate employees who are found to have done it. Um, you know, we're at a place now where we want to make sure that folks realize that integrity is paramount going forward. Uh, we are gonna be looking into developing a system that allows for members to approach management about concerns that they're seeing from their, from their other colleagues. Um and to make sure that's properly vetted and, and investigated, to make sure that there's not an integrity issue with people who pass through our process. Um, we are already incorporating that specific unfortunate BPD history as part of what is taught, not just in our re- recruit classes, but our in-service classes. You know, this is part of uh ethics refreshers that we know are important context for the members who join this department. They need to hear the story from us. They need to hear it not from rumors and innuendo and, and in the past. They need to hear the stories about why it's important for them to be the agents of culture change moving forward and not just rely on, you know, stories from the past. We want to be able to contextualize why it's important for there's, for there to be truthful information in our police reports. You know, we have to make sure that they're accurate. And if that means we have to go back and change something because it was done improperly, it needs to be done properly. So that training is something we're already implementing. Of course, EPIC, EPIC is a cornerstone program that we've been implementing for the last two years now. And again, we, we're becoming that national model on how that is taught. Um, and we coordinate with, with folks at a national level, not just a local level to do this. And it's now a foundation of what we do for not just how to do peer intervention, but how EPIC is interlaced in all of our training. So uh next slide. So for supervision, um, you know, part of making sure that we're meeting our consent decree requirements, our close and effective supervision, uh many of these are already, you know, blending in with the consent decree requirements for us. Um establishing a mentorship program that is beyond just the field trainer officer level, right? So that field training officer who is the first person that they're really side-by-side interacting with for the first few months after the academy is, is an important cornerstone. But we need to be able to pick it up from there and, and have that informal touch point for that member so that they can ask questions about how to work in the department and making sure that the right guidance is given to them, that we train those folks effectively. Um, we're looking at our peer assistance model, which is something for which our Officer Wellness Program, which is nationally renowned, uh leverages, and it's possible that we can expand that peer uh peer intervention program that we have where volunteer officers serve as support for other members in, in times of crisis. That's something for which we might be able to leverage existing resources to develop into a larger mentorship program. So that is something we're looking at. Um, again, making sure that when we have a new supervisor for a new unit, that they're getting all the information about those under that unit of which they now command. And that is a, a key understanding. We can't just throw people into a new assignment and expect them to succeed without giving them the tools and context and history of what the folks in that unit have been doing. And so we agree that's something we need to utilize. Um, it's been spoken about already, but making sure we're utilizing the chain of command. That's key. We need to make sure that those in the rank of major and above are doing the jobs of ranks major and above and not acting as a sergeant, not acting as a a lieutenant. We want to make sure folks are in the right place, doing the right jobs of what they're actually assigned, instead of creating these informal direct lines of of, of, of direction. That's just not good in, in a, in an environment where hierarchical structure is important for ensuring the right levels of accountability and oversight. You know, making sure we're screening folks. This is something for which we're already implementing when it comes to all of our special assignments, not just plainclothes members, but you know, when it relates to the plainclothes units or undercover units or whatnot, we want to make sure we're going through all of this process. These are, these are things we've already implemented. Um, when it comes to careful interview processes, looking at their full disciplinary history and understanding it. Um, we are gonna look into what, what it would take to do that discretionary financial audit side to make sure we have the right resources to accomplish it. But all of these are pieces of the puzzle that make sure that we have the right folks and the right integrity in the right positions. Um, and then, you know, making sure that supervisors are aware, and again, this is through our public integrity process. And we caveat it this only to say that, look, we want to make sure we're not compromising an investigation, right? If the investigation for which a member might be having some consideration of, of issues of integrity, we want to make sure the supervisor isn't also a target of that investigation. So in the cases for which it can be done and for which that supervisor could be of assistance to, to public integrity, we will make sure that there's an effort to inform them of something that might be ongoing, because it might be important for them to provide witness information for that investigation later on. Um, next slide, Michelle. The other broad category for oversight and accountability is a couple, there's a several recommendations, and they're on two different slides. But, you know, we've been able to reform our Public Integrity Bureau. Uh, we're seeing a, a lot more folks interested in the role. We've been able to interview folks and qualify them for moving into Public Integrity Bureau. Um, we do have a, an adjusted policy now that uh allows for a member who has PIB experience to be prioritized for promotion based on that experience. Um, that's something we're looking at implementing in February, actually, um as part of an overall policy reform effort. Um, and so that is something for which we agree. We want to make sure folks have the context for that public integrity mindset when they enter into a supervisory rate or into a managerial. Um, already, we've already promoted a, a number of lieutenants from out of PIB that have become captains, one's now a major. You know, we see that as a path for progression in the department, and that's important to continue to incentivize. Uh, we have implemented new training for the Internal Affairs Investigators, and we're gonna be giving more training to them, doing it on an annual basis. It's part of our draft fifth-year monitoring plan, that we do that refresher investigative training for public integrity. It's so important that we make sure the quality of the investigations are conducted with the right level of scrutiny, but also that they're fair and that they're reasonable and that they're done in a timely fashion. And so that training is hell designed to help create a more productive, more productive investigative workforce. Um, you know, we've, we've done a lot of systematic reforms on intake. Uh, and these are details that Deputy NATO at the, at the right time can answer questions on, but we've been able to de-conflict cases that have come up where one's an unknown officer and one might be known, and turns out it's the circumstances are the same case, we de-conflict those and make sure that they're handled by one investigator and not siloed off into two different investigations. Uh, so that's a key thing, because we want to make sure that we're getting a full picture of a member's conduct and not having information off in, in one area or another. Um, and again, we talked about this before, if we can have the capacity to do uh, you know, targeted integrity operations and, and making sure that we're being able to check on, on officer conduct, that's something that's resource-dependent, it'd be resource-heavy. But we do recognize its value, and it's something that down the road, if it, if it's something for which we can identify resources, we'll look into. Next slide. Uh, and then, once again, you know, the trial board process. I think Mr. Bronwich summed up uh some of the challenges of our trial board process. Um, but we've already implemented a lot of this in our new training that's, that's done when folks are onboarded to be trial board members. We want to make sure they understand that it is a preponderance of evidence standard. It's not beyond all shadow of a doubt. It's, it's what is the weight of evidence and, and where does it land? Um, and making sure they realize that there's a, a consequence for a member for whom we've demonstrated that standard and yet not let off because there's a concern about what the impact of discipline on the individual. We need to focus on what's best for the organization overall. And that's where that, that approach needs to be really part of that training that we're undertaking. Um, and we do have a process for, for making sure there's no conflicts of interest amongst members who serve on trial board and they're hearing information from uh a person for whom there might be a personal conflict of interest or, or, or issue. Um, we're looking at ways to strengthen that, making sure that we have the ability to do that, not just for our own members, but for also civilian members that serve on the board, make sure there's no interconnection there. But uh again, we want to make sure these are fair processes and that they're not done just as a matter of, of course. And so in, in looking at our units that are seizing guns, um and, and making sure that the arrests might be higher than others, we have a host of tools at the Compliance Bureau uh that are designed for measuring uh performance standards, the audits and inspections units. We, we want to make sure that those units, the most proactive units, are making quality arrests. And again, in looking at that, that quality over quantity, you know, making sure that we're, we're tracing that, not just from the, I think it was brought up earlier, and, and, and it was made, make sure that folks realize that as part of the commissioner's plan from, from as early as when he released his year-one plan, um chasing it from addressed all the way to conviction. That's something that's on, I think it's page eleven of, of the commissioner's plan. We have to make sure that the quality of the arrest is resulting in a conviction. Um, and that is, that is, you know, it's not just the number of arrests. We can't just drop the ball from there. Quality is important. We measure that through what's called the R-Walk process or arrest releases without charge. Um, and that's something that's published on a regular basis through, again, our monitoring team efforts, the Compliance Bureau, making sure we're tracing it all the way to conviction, because if we have enough evidence and enough probable cause to be able to substantiate an arrest, we would hope to make sure that there's a conviction at the end. Um, Michelle, for the last slide. Then finally, just kind of rounding out these uh final recommendations, we are conducting the interview, exit interview process. It can be very difficult for members who are leaving the agency to want to give exit interviews, but we do uh have a process for that. But we also want to make sure we're getting their input now, not just when they leave. I mean, one could argue, once they leave, it's, it's already too late. So we are actually engaging now with our So we are actually engaging now with our PCON tool, which is a survey tool that is given out to our members now to provide feedback, to provide information about how they feel about the department and, and what, what are the challenges that they face. That's data for which we can act on today instead of waiting for separation data to come. So we're looking at both and that's important. The recommendation about debriefing their predecessors, the commissioner, you know, always, at least this commissioner has always been open to receiving information from his predecessors, but it's just as important for our, our executive team overall, not just the commissioner, to be able to have the ability to debrief their predecessors and to provide an exit memo if they're moving on to another opportunity. You know, we want to make sure that the information is not contained within an individual and that continuity of operations can, can, can move on and that the information is passed from the next person on. And so it's an overall process in our recommendation for this. We wanted to make sure folks realize that we operate with that exit memo mentality, not just reaching back, but pushing forward. And then, you know, looking at the very last recommendation, I think this was one that came after. You know, if there are issues of, of another corruption scandal that comes in the future, having an independent outside investigation will certainly appropriate for GTTF. It, it may absolutely be appropriate in future issues if they are to arise. You know, there are agencies like the OIG's office or the Attorney General's office who could serve as that outside investigative effort, which we feel could be an appropriate venue. But yeah, I mean, I think we absolutely are, are here to make sure that the integrity of an investigation like that would be handled much more properly if it's a systemic review, similar to the one that was done in scope this time, that it'd be, you know, captured in a similar format. So that's, that's all of our recommendations. I went through those briefly, but I wanted to make sure we reserve most of the balance of the time, Mr. Chairman, for, for your members' questions about how BPD can further give information about how we're responding to these recommendations. Michelle, I think that concludes the slide deck, so you can just continue sharing.
Thank you, Eric. I, I once again appreciate you guys for really stepping out in, in front of this. I guess you almost didn't have a choice, but I think this is a really, really important opportunity for us as a department, as a city, to get this right. And it first takes us looking these issues directly in the face, talking about it openly and, and being very realistic about what we're going to do and how we're going to address it. I don't have many questions, more of a statement and one that we already discussed. And I think it's important that we continue to track our progress on implementing these issues. And so I, I ask of you, and, and you already know this request, but that we have a tracker to show our progress on this going forward. I think it's incumbent upon this committee to make sure that we follow through. You know, Commissioner Harrison, you, you spoke in time and time again, and I really do believe this. We, we have the potential to become one of the best police departments in the world. And I think it starts with being very serious about these issues today. So not so much a question, more requests and more statements. But with that, I'll open the floor to additional questions from the council members. Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues. It is refreshing to know that, you know, the department is really embracing this work. And so I really do appreciate it. And I also share the chairman sentiments that, you know, we, we do want to, I think a tracker is a great idea, just the same one that you use for, similar to the, one you use with the consent decree with the bar charts, if I like that one. And then my question goes back to what I talked about earlier with Mr. Bromwich, which was, you know, we need a way to talk about what this new policing looks like to residents. And we need a way that the officers are also helping to explain it to residents. When I have a resident that says, I want these guys cleared out from the corner, what are we saying? And that way it's clear to the public what's going on. So can you talk a little bit about what that PR approach is going to be, how we're, you know, can you guide us as well?
Well, I started, maybe somebody else on the team, if they want to jump in, can, can certainly jump in. Communication, if you look, if you look at the crime plan, communication was at the center of all the other issues. Community, culture, community, culture, compliance, connectivity. Communication is the most important thing because it's not a matter of what we do well, but rather how many people know we do it well. Likewise, what we don't do well, people need to know and we need to know. So we've been putting a lot of emphasis on the communication strategy, starting with training the officers on what they can do. When I first got here, everybody was really focused on what we can't do. And officers would often say, my, you know, our hands are tied, we're handcuffed. You know, that's code for, I can't do what I used to do, which was wrong in the first place. So we've been working with the communication, first of all, by educating them on what they can do and the appropriate way to do it, both in the use of force training, which every member took over two years ago, and the stop searches and arrest training, then moving to the community policing training and then epic training. And when you put it all together, now they should know what they can do. The question is, how are we communicating that to the community? I still get, as you do, requests from citizens to, you know, I want these people going from this corner. I want them going from in front my door. I think the officers struggle to communicate what we can do and how they go about doing that because the answer is in a community engagement strategy. While we can't just clear corners the way we used to, we can engage and we can disrupt criminal activity and bad behavior, but it's through engagement and it is something we need to improve on. It is a struggle. We find that there are many officers who embrace it and know how to do it well, but there's still some who refuse to accept that there's a new way of, of doing things. And that is what training is about. That is what discipline is about and that's what the whole transformation is about. And that's what I think in our commanders' monthly meetings, that's why it's so important for the people to attend those meetings. It, in some fashion, offer the commander to get the information out about what's happening in each individual district. Because people who are usually asking those questions are not often the people who attend the meetings and get the information firsthand.
Well, that, that's kind of what, where I'm going, right? I mean, we, we have, you know, elders who are not going to go on those meetings, bottom line, right? So we, you know, we need the same vocabulary that you are using to be able to talk about what can and can't happen and what are reasonable expectations. And I just don't think that we're doing, all of us, myself, myself included. I, we're not doing a good job of that communication. And so hopefully we can work together on that. I mean, I think, you know, I, my district is really fortunate to have two amazing majors. And they are, you know, very, and their, their staff, their engagement staff is engaged. But then it gets to, okay, well, if I see this other officer on the corner, how are they going to be speaking about it? It's not just the engagement staff, right? So, and then of course, it's just, you know, how we engage. So it would be helpful at some point, maybe just a separate meeting or some other way to, to just make sure that we're all on the same page with what we're supposed to be saying.
Happy, happy to help with that.
That's it for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions? All right. So no additional questions. We are going to adjourn the hearing. I want to really thank Mr. Bromwich. I want to thank BPD for, for being very thorough in, in, in the investigation and, and one facing these things directly. So I appreciate all the time that you guys have given us and look forward to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if we, if we have, this is our Councilwoman Porter. If we have additional questions, should we just reach out to Director Witzberger?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. I bet you have any answers for the questions.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.